Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merringa.
Present.
Norhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Present.
Vanderwaal.
Present.
And Mayor Mas.
Present. Well, tonight, I think that's the only time I've ever said that. Yes, it was just kind of on our own. Tonight, for the invocation, we have pastor signs from the Granville-Jennison Congregational Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, gracious Lord, we come together in praise of your almighty hand. Your creation has given us a beautiful world to live in. Lord, we are grateful for our part of that world, our beautiful city of Granville. Through your love, we are blessed with all that this earth can hold and this earth can offer us. We thank you, Lord, for our lives, our health, our jobs, our homes, and our comforts. Keep us ever mindful that all the blessings we have come from you. Father, you taught us in the Scriptures to obey our governing authorities. You yourself established earthly authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. So, Lord, we pray tonight for our Mayor Mas and for all of our city officials, elected or appointed. Grant them wisdom to govern, confidence to make the right decisions, courage to be a voice for all, a sense of harmony to work together, and to always have a servant's heart. Lord, we ask for blessings of peace in their personal lives so they can feel joy as they work for others. Lord, please bless our police and firefighters and all of our first responders who place others above themselves every day. And, Father, we ask for blessings on all of our city workers as they help to make our community a better place to be. And we ask for all of these blessings through the most precious name of our Holy Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate that very much.
You checked my passport at the door because I live in Genesous.
Well, we could look for a house for you here in Genesous. We have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, May 8th. Have a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out in those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving, please say yes.
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 Any opposition, please say no. Tonight, Dennis, kind of a healthy, hefty amount of bills, over $900,000. Anything you'd like to point out to us before we open up for questions?
No, but Jane does have a few things to talk about.
Okay, great, Jane.
So, given the amount, I wanted to let you know that two of those checks equal more than a third. So, while it seems like a big number, it's basically due to the check for Georgetown Construction and the amount of $228,418 for the water maintenance on Harvest Avenue, Lee Street, 29th Street, which marks us about halfway through both projects. And then the other one was a check to Game Time in the amount of $230,000 for '42. This one is significant because I wanted to point out that while we budgeted $245,000 for the Towne and Crest Park playground and $265,000 for the Westwood Park playground, the total amount of the equipment for those parks is $351,308, which offsets the amount that we paid by a grant from Game Time of over $120,000. So that's significant. The other thing I wanted to report on is about 45 minutes before the meeting, I got recognition from the state that we are slated to receive our last personal property reimbursement distribution in the amount of almost $55,000, which is roughly $135,000 more than we budgeted. So.
Go ahead and introduce. You can tell us stuff like that every move. All right. Thank you. Any questions, Jer?
Yeah, Jane, I was going to ask about that private grant, those two line items there. How did they secure those grants? Did we have this conversation? I guess I'm, that's awesome news, but.
I'll let Charlie chime in a little bit, but it's my understanding that Game Time, in order to work through the winter, likes to secure orders from local governmental units by offering a portion of that to be slated as a grant so that they're working throughout the winter.
So we pay them to work during the winter and they give us a discount?
Yes, they give us, it is quite significant discount, but we can't show it as a discount. We have to show it as a grant revenue.
And they actually forwarded the grant to us before they added this. We'll give it to you upfront.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's great. Any other questions on any of the bills for Jane, Dennis? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $932,673?
So moved. Support.
Support. Any other discussions, questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Kim, welcome.
Hey. Kim Prisman, 4439, 42nd Court. Lived in Granville since 1988. Happened to be the chair of the Parks and Rec Department. And I'm here just to say thank you for your foresight in purchasing the property east of the cemetery property that's south of Bull Creek. That will add immensely to the potential that we are looking at and what we will be recommending in the next few months on what to do with that. So with your foresight and the ability to save about $300,000 on a bridge is very much appreciated. So, and we had a walkthrough with Kevin Allen, who was with the Mountain Bike Association. Just looked at it, trying to figure out how to lay it out. But our goal is to turn that into, at some point, a new park area. We're landlocked. That property is more valuable than I think it would be to develop. So thank you very much for your foresight. We appreciate it greatly, and it gives us a little more to work with. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your service on the Park and Rec Board, too.
It's, thank you for your hard work. It's fun, sure.
Appreciate that. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys doing tonight?
Doing well.
Good. My name is Brent Talon. Address is 4452, 41st Street. I am also here for two reasons. I'm a resident of the city of Granville. It's a great, great city. Been a resident since 1996. And I'm also on the Parks and Rec Board with Kim and Josh. Again, I really want to thank the city for their strategic planning in the purchase of that property for future park expansion, green space, whatever that may be in the future. But the planning was there, you know, the bridge is really important for access to that property. And I thought that was really great of the council and the city to have that foresight to purchase that property without having to, you know, incur some additional expenses in the future. It's going to be a great addition to the city for years to come, whatever that space becomes developed. Again, just a thank you, guys, to the city and for all you guys do.
Thank you very much, too. I see we've got a few members of the Park and Rec Board. Thank you all for your hard work. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Last call? Okay. We've got a number of ordinances and resolutions, and a lot of them have to do with budget kind of items. The first one is Resolution 3312, and that's regarding the rates for water and sewer. Jane, is anything you want to add to that? I know you've gone over it before.
I don't really have anything to show because I don't have any questions.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3312?
So moved. Support.
And support. Any questions or comments on this? It's pretty straightforward. You put the numbers in, you see what the rates have to be. Have a motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. The next one is a resolution to approve the levy of an additional millage rate. This is part of the Headley Amendment in the Truth in Taxation. And if I try and explain it, I probably will really be very confusing. So Jane, I don't know, if you want to briefly describe what it's like?
So I'd be happy to, but Charlie has put this together, so I'm going to let him tackle that. The word additional, I will say, is extremely misleading.
Yes.
They don't charge additional millage, but that's per the state. That's the wording we have to use.
Okay. Yeah, and I see the calculation. It's, so, Charlie, am I right when thinking? It's not, we're not raising the millage rate, but because of increases in property values, in taxable values, there's additional money created in the year, and this kind of accounts for that?
Well, there's a couple of different things going on with this. So there's a heavily rollback, which could roll back Granville's millage rate, maximum levy millage rate, which was not rolled back this year. And it's important to note that the city of Granville does not levy the full millage. They have the capability of levying a millage up to, I believe it's 17.4 mils. We've been levying 11.05 mils for the last three or four years or so, six years. So, how time flies. So all this is doing is keeping the millage rate at 11.05, and they're calling that the additional millage rate because without the truth in taxation, it would roll back that millage rate to, it's on the memo on the year. 10.5196 mils. So all this is doing is keeping the millage rate the same.
Any questions for Charlie or Jane? Anybody else? Randy?
No.
Okay. All right, we have Resolution 3313, a resolution to approve the levy of the, did we have a motion and support on this? Okay, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3313?
So moved. Support.
And support. Any other discussion or questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next resolution we have for consideration is 3314, and that's a resolution to adopt the budget for the fiscal year 2023 through 2022, 2024. So we've spent a lot of time, the council has spent a couple work sessions, and we've also had a public hearing on it. And I know Jane and the department heads have worked extensively on it beginning, I don't know, last year even?
January.
January. So it's a good budget. Jane, you did a great job your first year explaining it and walking us through it. It was very well done, so. Anything else you'd like to add in addition to what we've talked about before?
The only thing that I would like to add is I created a document to support the resolution. It is in your book, the manager's memo. That basically summarizes the budget and brings it into a format in which we're adopting it at the function level. So if you want to adopt at the line item level, we adopt at the function level. So that is what this is going to outline for us, which functions we are required to charge our budget for.
And I think it's important to note that even after expenses, our fund balance projected is still very robust and far beyond what our requirements.
We have some little room.
Yeah, that's good. And then you brought us some good news tonight, too. So that's all. Any questions for Jane? Any comments? Yeah, Josh?
Just a comment, I guess. I mean, I think you've done a really nice job with this. You know, all the department heads, you know, a little bit of a change for us, but kind of walked us through it and got us, you know, thinking a little bit differently about some of the funds and making a few changes. And I really like how you did this book. I was looking through it, and I noticed that you added the program narrative or the kind of description for each function area, and that's really neat. I like that, that program narrative with some of the facts and figures, and so that's helpful.
We're going to have a poll for next year. I'd like to tackle all the funds and get measurable items in there just for descriptive purposes and metrics, just so people can see what happens with their dollars.
Well, I think even for the public to be looking through this, which I'm assuming will be on our website eventually, too, to kind of explain what each fund is for and what the purpose is. So, nice job. Thanks a lot.
Jer?
Yeah, the good news that you brought to us about your hour ago now bonus that we got, how does that get reflected in here, or does that just get?
So that's current year. So that is roughly 100, what did I say? $20,000 over and above what we budgeted for '22, '23. So what that will do is it will just increase our bottom line because we weren't anticipating getting, I think we had $350,000 budgeted for that, and we're up closer to like 185 or 285 to 200.
So that will just push our fund balance?
So it just pushes our fund balance even higher, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And you said that was a final payment for the personal property take?
That's the final payment for the year, yep.
Oh, for the year, not?
Yep. We received one in October and one in May, so.
Okay. It's not phasing out completely, then?
No, but it is, it does come down. So we budget that number, if you were to look in the detail for the revenues here, we don't budget that number close to what we think it's going to be. We're very conservative because that personal property tax reimbursement is very slippery slope. Every year, it's based on different criteria, and as they're phasing out personal property taxes, there's less to reimburse for. So, yeah, I don't anticipate that number going up, but it's a nice kind of bonus that we are over what we thought we were going to be.
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
You know, I've heard it said, if you want to know what somebody's priorities are, take a look at their budget or take a look at their checkbook, right? I mean, this is what we think is important. And I think for whoever takes a look at this budget, it's important to see that as a council, we have decided quality of life is very, very important. Park and recreation is very important. So I encourage people to take a look at this. This shows what our priorities are.
It sure does.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 3314? That's the resolution to adopt the budget for this coming fiscal year.
So moved.
Motion and support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is something maybe Dennis wants to explain a little. Although I know that this is something we have to do if we ever want to get FEMA, I think. So Dennis?
That's correct. So it's pretty straightforward. The counties, both counties, Ottawa County and Kent County, along with the city of Grand Rapids, have updated the hazard mitigation plan. And the reason that we're signing on to that is because we need to have that established with the city so that we can get reimbursed in the event of a natural disaster. So we're recommending that the city approve and sign on with this tonight so that we have the availability to get to FEMA funds if we so need.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3315, a resolution adopting the hazard mitigation plan?
So moved.
Support. And support. Any questions, comments? Now, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringas.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is Resolution 3316. That's regarding adopting the bylaws of the Granville Library Board. And I believe this was so that somebody could be chairperson more than three consecutive years. I think that's, is that right, Josh?
Correct, yep.
That's right. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, that's good.
Okay. All right, we had talked about it before, and so here it's. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 3316? It's a resolution adopting bylaws of the Granville Library Board?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Questions, discussion, comments? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Final resolution tonight is, or at least under ordinances and resolutions, is Number 3317, and that's a resolution to adopt a 2023 master plan. Dennis, is there anything you want to add? And I know we've got the chair of the Planning Commission here as well.
The master plan has been through a number of iterations. We have vetted it with looking for typos and errors and formatting errors. This evening, once the council has adopted the master plan, then our consultant will make final preparations to print the final master plan by putting page numbers and correcting any last-minute typos. So I think this properly reflects a great deal of work, not only by Assistant City Manager Butts, but also our consultants and a number of the people in the Planning Commission, especially our chairperson who is out in the audience this evening.
Carolyn, JR, either of you like to comment? Any other comments about the master plan?
Excuse me, as was indicated by Dennis, Matt and Chris have done an awful lot on this and a lot of forward thinking that, you know, we on the Planning Commission raised issues and we were kind of prodded by the two of the guys to think forward, think ahead 20 years down the road, what we'd like to see. So I think JR would compare, I think we, all mutually, all really, could all agree on this.
Jer, anything you'd like to add?
No, nothing additional. I would agree with Carolyn's, you know, statements. I think also this new plan is, I guess, editable now, which I think was a big problem with our previous plan, which is interesting that we didn't have an editable plan. But it's neat to see that we're having a master plan come to fruition again. We acquired a property, and I saw in the closing documents was a master plan from the '60s from the city of Granville. And it was interesting to read through that and to see how far we've come in, you know, 50, 60 years. So, yeah, we've all done a great job, and thank you for chairing that committee, Carolyn.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 3317, a resolution which adopts the 2023 master plan?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Number of items under the consent agenda and approval would be in the best interest of the city because there are some purchases on there. We have some reports from April, the investment report and the fire EMS report, as well as the minutes from the May meetings of the Planning Commission and the Downtown Development Authority. We also have purchase orders. One is the third-year pledge to the right place. Yeah, it will be year three of three-year commitment of $6,000. We have a request from the Department of Public Works for signalization at Canal and Fairlands, and that's in the amount of $173,450. Strain electric. The final item is restroom upgrades at the Little League complex, and that's budgeted with ARPA funds. But the cost for those upgrades is $95,300. And that's going to be performed by DBR Concepts, Design, Build, and Remodel. So those are the items under the consent agenda. And is there a motion to approve that consent agenda in the best interest of the city? Motion?
Support.
And support. Anybody want to discuss any of those items in particular or questions on it? Yeah.
Oh, just, I mean, the bathroom upgrades has been something we've talked about for a number of years. And I know Chris is here from the Park and Rec Board, but he also serves with the Granville Little League and their facilities committee and leads the facilities there. So it's a long time in coming. It should be a nice upgrade. It's just another one of those things where we're kind of moving those ARPA funds into the community to benefit our public spaces, so.
Thank you for the reminder. We appreciate it.
Yeah, just to echo that, too. It sounds like Charlie, from your memo, that you finally got a contractor to quote that, so.
I asked two or three, and one responded, and the other one wouldn't respond. I think the problem with contractors is during COVID, you couldn't get fires moving, not at all. Materials coming in, and they're doing it as option two years ago. So it's harder to get one, of course, going into this working, so.
Well, thank you for continuing to pursue that. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Dennis, City Manager's Report.
There's one item in the manager's report this evening. The reason that this purchase order recommendation is being separated out is because it was an unbudgeted item. And Charlie, can you take a couple minutes to explain the project and why we're doing it?
Sure. When we did the bridge inspections this year, the inspector found it's a 21-inch sewer main that was underneath the bridge on Wilson Avenue, north to south. And luckily, there was a good-sized hole that was on the top of the sewer main, and we were able to put a temporary fix on it. So it has to be what pluggers and those come in, and they're going to set up a truck, and they're going to actually pump the sewer from manhole to man, or pump around, they call it. And then they will put a liner in it and reseal the inside of that thing. It's kind of an important thing to get done because the last thing we need is sewers to start running into Bull Creek, so that's why it's kind of being expedited, unbudgeted item, but there is money in the fund to take care of.
Out of curiosity, how long does that project take?
How long?
Yeah.
Probably 10 hours, maybe.
Oh, okay. Quicker than I thought.
The biggest thing, the biggest thing will be to set up the pump around the manhole.
Interesting.
Any other questions for Dennis or Charlie? Is there a motion to approve hiring homeowners environmental service to repair that sewer main under the Wilson Avenue Bridge in the best interest of the city in the amount of $41,883?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Questions, comments, observations? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, anything else?
This evening, thank you.
All right. Councilmember comments? Jer, let's start with you, Tom.
Uh, just a couple of things. Just one, wanted to thank Justin for bringing library board bylaws to us. It's something we probably would never think about otherwise, and I think it protects and serves those people that are willing to serve on that committee, and so thank you for taking the time to, to do that. Obviously, I'd like to give well wishes to Matt and his family, thoughts, prayers, whatever gets your vote, thinking about him lately. And obviously, the DDA community meeting tomorrow is going to be a fun thing with Teresa over there at the Commons at the library. Looking forward to attending that as both a council member and a local business owner. So if you're around, check it out. I think there's a note in here. That's the whole thing? Yeah.
Paul? Thank you for the reminder on that DDA thing. I'd like to go to that. Just one item, pardon me, Fourth of July will be upon us. Before we know it, I'm on the committee, as you all know, and parade. Thought I would check and see what council member interest is. You don't have to notify me right now, but if you could get back to me in the next week or so as to whether or not you want to be in the parade, there's city council member entry, or if you want to be in the parade on your own, that's fine, too. In the past, we've gone together. So there you go.
Parade's actually on the Fourth, which is lucky, the week, Tuesday.
It is on the Fourth at eleven AM. Weather's going to be great.
It's always nice and warm.
Yes.
No, I was going to say, I, I missed it.
All right. We're down. We'll need a vehicle. You going to be in? We'll talk. That's all.
Yeah.
I was going to say thanks to Justin, too, for bringing that up, and it, it made me think back to when we were talking about topics for strategic planning and looking back at some of our old bylaws or ordinances or policies and maybe routinely just taking a couple of them and looking at them and saying, hey, is there anything we can do better in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four? So, just an idea. And Chief, did, did the police enjoy a, a happy, respectful police week, National Police Week last week?
Thank you very much, and this week is National EMS Week, so.
Well, there we go. Two, two of our very important people and divisions getting some recognition, so, good. Thank you both.
Justin, I wasn't going to say anything, but I will say I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Steenstra about taking a look at bylaws and ordinances and going back through that. I remember discussing that before, and I definitely think it's worthwhile, so, thanks for bringing that up.
Josh?
Yeah, I was also going to mention EMS Week, so thanks to our EMS providers, we get those medical reports or, you know, EMS reports in our packets on a regular basis and see how important that is for the community for all the responses and, and medical calls that the fire department gets to. So thanks for all the work that goes into that. Appreciate you. And when you need it, you, you really appreciate it, right?
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is I was asked to post about, so there's a notice on the city's page. The city's partnering with the Boy Scouts to decorate the cemetery tomorrow for Memorial Day. Uh, so that'll be at six PM at the cemetery. Uh, the Boy Scouts troops, several of them actually are going to be working to lead the community in decorating the cemetery for Memorial Day. And there will be a short explanation and history of meeting in Memorial Day, as well as a demonstration of the process of recognition to be provided by the scouts and their families. And so the whole community is welcome to join in that in helping decorate the cemetery to honor our veterans in preparation for Memorial Day. So if it happens to be bad weather tomorrow, the rain date will be on Wednesday at six PM. So for now, plan on Tuesday at six PM, meet at the cemetery if you'd like to participate in that. So they do a great job. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Randy?
I think you guys covered most of it, although I just wanted to say I would hope that if there's any needs with Matt at his home or anything that any of us can do, that we, there's a line of communication open that he's aware of that, and certainly our thoughts and prayers. But if, you know, if there's a household problem or something that we can help him out with, just let us know.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things. One of them is over the last month or month and a half, we've had a lot of second graders come in for the annual meeting to come into City Hall, and they go to the fire department. And it's been a lot of fun. I know that this year, Tim has helped. You did it last week when I was gone, and the questions are always great and, and a lot of fun. And I think Marcy did it also for me one day last week, so I don't know if you had any interesting questions or not.
They practice public comment, so.
That, that's good. That's good, yeah. So I think the, the questions are always good. Some of them are just, you know, kind of, kind of fun, like what's my favorite color or whatever, but the good, you know, some of them are really pretty thought-provoking, and that's like, what is the hardest thing about being a city council member or being the mayor? What's the hardest thing? And I, I thought, I, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of good things, but probably I explained once in a while saying no to somebody that you really, your heart really would like to help, but because of state law or whatever, it's, it's not possible. So anyway, those were kind of, kind of cool questions. What, another thing I realized was it's very hard to compete with a fire department as far as, as the awe factor. I mean, as awesome as this council chamber is, it certainly doesn't come even close to stuff that is all shiny and water and lights and that kind of stuff. So kids always, always love, so thank you all. On the police department as well and for hosting, hosting the kids. And then I think they always ended up at Heritage Park and the schoolhouse, having a picnic there, so it's kind of fun. So anyway, another season is done. It's, it's like, I didn't keep track this year, but I, probably five hundred kids, maybe? I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of schools, maybe twenty, twenty classes, something like that, yeah. Because it's not just from Granville, but, you know, Cummings and Grandview and Century Center, plus the four veteran in town, so. I think that's all I've got. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I was going to say, we're having such a nice time. Okay, I think there was a motion to support. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposition, please say no. Great. Thank you. Thank you, guests, for being here tonight, too.